Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Let the record reflect that today is May 4th and the time is 3:00. As a reminder, you are being recorded and on YouTube Live. Check your hair and your teeth. At this time, we will be, oh, I'm sorry. At this time, the approval of the agenda. Anybody have any questions?
So, we're removing...
To approve the agenda?
It's already been removed. Yep, so moved.
All right. Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will be led in the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Tucker.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you today. We ask for your blessings for this board, for this county, for our great Commonwealth of Virginia, and for our nation. Our Heavenly Father, we ask that you keep a hand of protection on our armed forces, that you guide, direct, and keep safe all of our law enforcement, that you look after those who serve in public safety, that you look after our teachers, good Lord, look after our medical personnel, the staff that helps us here in the county. Please bless them, give them guidance, give them wisdom. And lastly, dear Lord, we ask that you give all of our elected officials everything from the city councils to the President of the United States, your wisdom and your compassion. We ask that you give each board member here your compassion again, that we make decisions that are right for this county, right for our Commonwealth, that we look at every person as an individual, and every person, we look at them as they look at you, dear Lord, and you look at them as they are equal. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right. At this time, we're going to move to the public hearing. Stacy?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I make a, may I say something before we start the public hearing?
Sure.
With us today, we have candidate Mark Reed and his campaign staff, Christian. They were in town today to introduce themselves to citizens and to business members. And if it pleases the board and you, Madam Chair, could he have just a few minutes to introduce himself?
Sure.
Afternoon, Supervisors. I am Mark Reed. Thank you, Ms. Tucker, for giving me a few minutes, and also to the board for giving me a few minutes. I have been in town, I spend an awful lot of time here in town in Amherst County. In fact, I spend more time in Amherst County than I have anywhere else campaigning. And I'm from the city of Lexington, that's where I live, is the city of Lexington. But I've spent more time in Amherst County campaigning than I have in my own hometown. I feel it's important that folks know, and you know, if you're looking at me right now, I'm looking a little bit dusty and a little bit wrinkled because my main focus when I come to town is I knock on doors, homes, businesses, all over this county, which is a big county. It actually starts way down Route 60, almost, I feel like I've just left Buena Vista, now I'm in Amherst County, and then it just hits me that I'm in Amherst County. And then I gotta drive another half an hour, 45 minutes before I'm in the city or the town of Amherst. So, I come here, and really, my main focus when I come here is just to meet people in businesses and homes. That's where I spent the past hour and a half before I got here. That's where I spent about three hours the last time I was out here last week. I think I've been out here since I've started running, I believe I've been out here five or six times. I've met a lot of good folks, including folks that have a lot in common with me. And so, what I want to leave you with, in fact, I'm sure because you're good supervisors, you already know, but people want to be heard in Amherst County. Now, I live in Lexington, and Lexington residents are very secure in the fact that they are heard in Richmond, as is Rockbridge County, which is right next door to where I live. They feel that their voice is heard in Richmond. But I know for a fact, because I talk to people, that Amherst County is not heard from Richmond, and frankly, I'm of the firm belief that Amherst County should have been heard more from a year and a half or two years ago. That's my firm belief, and I'll tell anybody that. So, I'm going to, when I'm running, I'm going to spend a lot of time out here, but when I say when I'm elected, I'm going to be spending a lot of time out here. I will have an office, there is an office here, but it's closed, not even a week, five days before an election. My office will be open because I know that Amherst County has heard from me, and I think it's time for me to hear more from Amherst County. But most important, I think, it's important for Richmond to hear from Amherst County. And they aren't. I know this because I talk to people. I get phone calls, people I knock on their doors, and two days later, they're calling me. And you'd be surprised, or maybe you wouldn't, that many of them don't even know who their delegate is in Richmond. And these are people who are voters, registered voters, meeting somebody who's running for the House delegates, and the first question is usually, who's, well, no, the first question is, are you a Republican or a Democrat? The second question is, who's running, who are you running against? And this is after I've already introduced myself as Republican, running for House delegates in a primary on June 8th. So, it tells me that Amherst doesn't hear what's coming from Michigan, and, Michigan, I'm from Michigan. Amherst doesn't hear what's coming from Richmond. Richmond doesn't hear what's coming from Amherst. So, I just wanted to assure you, and I'd like to meet each one of you individually, whenever you're available, I want you to be sure that I'm going to represent this area, and I'm going to spend, like I already have, more time here than anybody else. So, if you have questions for me, you can track me down. I will meet, I answer my own phone, I answer my own email. Today, I have to leave shortly, but Christian, Christian Raymond, my campaign manager, will be here, and you can talk with him. But like I said, I appreciate you leaving, letting me be here. Ms. Tucker, I appreciate the time that you gave me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Appreciate you coming. All right. Public hearing. Stacy, I think you're up.
I'm a little shorter. So, we need to hold another public hearing for the school budget. When I advertised, I inadvertently left out the school nutrition portion of the budget. So, the budget amount is about $2.7 million higher than what we advertised the first time. So, it's actually 54, 417, 379. So, we'll hold a public hearing today, and then we'll adopt the resolution we should have adopted last week, on the 18th.
Board, any questions for Stacy? Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor?
Do we need a motion to have the public hearing? The recommended motion was that we consider having it on May 18th.
That's correct. So, you're conducting a public hearing today to hear from the public. You have to wait seven days. So, rather than just hold a special meeting seven days, we're going to have you adopt the actual resolution at your next meeting, 14 days from today.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak opposed? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Board, what's your pleasure?
I move. I move that the board consider the school FY 2022 budget for adoption on May 18th, 2021.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we will have that adoption on May 18th. Got it. At this time, we're going to open the floor up for citizen comments. Is there anybody here wishing to address the board? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we will close citizen comments and move on to the ordinance first read for zoning and subdivisions. Mr. Bryant?
Good afternoon, everyone. This is an ordinance for food trucks, and the planning commission recommended approval. Generally, the county permits food trucks by, with a zoning permit, and through the zoning permit, we require that food trucks meet setbacks, we require an owner permission letter, and we generally look at parking. One observation that we have in a finding is that generally, if you're a food truck, food trucks, in Amherst, we don't have a food truck ordinance, and that's what we're putting before you today as a food truck ordinance. And so, we're asking the regulation to, if you are a food truck, act like a food truck. If you're a restaurant, you want to act like a restaurant, we want to permit a restaurant. And so, right now, food trucks can be permitted. However, they essentially can get around some of the regulations like landscaping, sidewalks, building regulation review. And so, the purpose of this ordinance is to still allow food trucks, but it is to regulate food trucks in the sense that they could stay then for 72 hours at a time, and the B2 district or the industrial district has a permitted use, but they would no longer be able to sit up and stay in perpetuity or stay forever until their zoning permit or their time runs out if they stop that use. We do have a couple of food trucks in the county that are existing, and we intend to, for those to stay grandfather, the ones that are there. However, it is true that if they picked up their business and they moved to a different location, they would then have to follow these regulations, if, in fact, the board adopted them. Generally, these requirements now go into details such as, again, I think one of the most important things is that food trucks can only stay for 72 hours at a particular location. There are exemptions, so we have exempt food trucks. So, if you're at a fair, birthday parties, special events, likely could fall within an exemption and may not need a permit for single day events and short events. But uses where we're setting up a land use and uses where food trucks stay in perpetuity, we are intending to have changes to those regulations. The planning commission, as I mentioned to you, recommended approval of this ordinance, and staff is asking you today to direct staff to advertise this ordinance for a public hearing at the May 18th, 2021 meeting. Any questions for staff?
Board, any questions?
Mr. Bryant, how did you, I think it's great, you've done a great job, just on the location and access, how did you come up with the 25 feet from Angras and Agress? Is that enough, or should it be further?
We felt like that was enough. In some cases, there are places along Madison Drive, since 29 is such a linear corridor, a lot of those food trucks want to be seen from Route 29. And so, we looked at a lot of different ordinances, we looked at other locations, localities. I believe we got it from another locality. Tyler, do you remember exactly where the 25 came from?
I believe Bedford County requires 25 feet, so does Alamo County.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we direct staff to advertise for a public hearing for May 18th on ordinance 2021-0004.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Tucker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, I believe, Linda, you're up.
If I may remove my mask, my glasses are fogging up, and I won't be able to read if I don't.
Infatuated?
Yes, yes, sir. I am. The board generously gave the HR department funds this fiscal year to purchase performance management software. It's something I had asked for for several years, so I greatly appreciate that, so I wanted to start by saying thank you. In acquiring the software, I initially looked at what are sort of the three big providers of this software, which are Bamboo HR, SAP, and Trackstar. Trackstar is the company that I had been in contact with to get us a quote every year. Bamboo HR neglected to quote, and part of the problem is we're considered a small account, and these companies deal with huge employers with like 5,000 employees. SAP did some initial conversations and basically were not able to give us a quote that was going to be in the ballpark of the amount of money that we had. I sent out a survey to the members of the International Public Managers Association HR group and found out that a lot of the larger counties and cities use NeoGov. So, I contacted them and got a quote from them, I got a quote from Trackstar, and I got a quote from Express Evaluations. Express Evaluations is a new small company that had done a presentation to that same HR group that I sent the email out to. So, we demoed all three software with the department heads so that I could get feedback from them, and the decision was that Trackstar was the most user-friendly and that they should be able to do the things that we needed them to do. And then I negotiated a 14-month contract because I certainly didn't want to pay them for a whole year when we're this late in the year. They include their installation cost in their fee, so I was able to get, negotiate the contract, so 4,000 of it will be for May and June, which will be most of the installation, and then 6,000 for next fiscal year. That's for 100 employees, which will be all of our regular county employees, and leave room for the library. That will leave me money if the constitutional officers and the service authority like the software once we get it implemented, then they could join in as well. And so, the plan is to go ahead and implement with the regular county employees and hopefully the library as well, and then move forward and expand it to other departments. And what I'm asking today is that you approve the customer agreement so that we can move forward quickly. It has been reviewed by the IT director because she deals with software contracts all the time, and the county attorney.
Board, any questions? Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Is the goal, do we eventually move to merit?
Yes.
Based on the evaluation?
Yes. Right now, we don't have an instrument that we can make a educated decision on merit, but the goal would be that at some point in the future, once we get this implemented and we feel comfortable that it is properly evaluating the employees for merit, that we would come back to the board and propose merit pay, and then that would be your all's decision whether to move forward with that.
Perfect. And then this will be implemented, like, are you thinking July of this year?
Yes.
And, so employees will be evaluated in June of next year?
Is that how it works? No, we do informal evaluations in July, so the idea would be we would use it for those informal evaluations, and then their regular formal evaluation happens in January.
Okay.
So, we would be fully implemented so that those formal evaluations would be, all be in the system in January.
Okay.
I have a question regarding merit pay, which is, which is good, but would that be public knowledge? Let's say you went to merit pay, and the individual maybe that you're working with would only get a 2%, and they would know that, and then some other individual might get a 4%. Would that be public knowledge, or would you be able to keep that private? Because it seems to me you could get into some real...
Yeah. The only public knowledge would be the annual salary. There are five things that have to be released publicly, and that is employees whose salaries are $10,000 or more, their annual salary, reimbursements if they're reimbursed for expenses, their job title and job classification. In our case, we use those interchangeably. And I'm trying to remember, Mark, do you remember the last thing?
I knew you were going to turn.
I've gone totally, totally blank.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if that would open you up to more potential litigation, based upon pay.
Right. I mean, merit pay is used by many organizations.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, typically, it's not done arbitrarily. I mean, it's like, you know, if you've got a needs improvement, you know, acceptable or, you know, high achiever, whatever, you kind of get a percentage based on each.
On your performance evaluation. Okay.
So, yeah, I think, I think it's very nice that you're getting this. My question is for you, Mr. Rogers, if we've approved the money for this and the budget, right?
Yes, in the current year. So, we're trying to get done before the end of the current year. Yes, sir.
So, I'm a little confused. It says recommended motion, none.
That's right. Because you have authorized us to go forward, we don't need a motion. We're just informing you where we stand.
Yeah, great. So, yeah, I appreciate you coming with us and telling us about it, for sure. We use NeoGov in the city, and it's a little cumbersome.
That's, that's actually exactly the complaint of those of us who were demoed NeoGov, is we felt like it was difficult.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Thank you.
Any other questions before she...
So, the way that would work, Mr. Pugh, is generally, once we have criteria for each person, it'll, it'll come out with an objective score, and that what you all might do then is assign the funding that you'll want to put toward a raise, some will be cost of living, but some will be merit. And then you'll set up a scale of how much you apply toward each grouping of scores. So, if somebody's score is very high, they would get a larger, a larger percentage. But, but that would all be under a set figure that you all would establish, and we'd be working from a set fund that you would give us. But it, but it would be based upon individual performance, and that would go into their total salary, and the total salary is what's reported, not what makes up that salary.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. But we're not going to be, have any input into regular staff salaries and how much raise they get, right?
Well, you might set the percentage of a cost of living increase, as you currently do.
But I mean, for the merit.
Well, that, those, so, as, as Mr. Martin described, you know, there's people that are below standard, meet standard, above standard, way above standard. Well, you assign a number to that. And then of all the different criteria, they each have a different number, it all gets averaged together, and you come up with a 3.2 or 3.4. You all might say, all right... right, we want to set aside, say $500,000 of, of our recurring revenue for merit pay for this year. And we would put in front of you a scale. So those that get between, from four to 3.5 might get this amount or percentage and those at the next stage would get this amount and so forth.
So our input would be into the range, not into the specific employee.
Or to the, to the dollar amount.
And to the total dollar amount, yes, sir, because you would want to set a cap.
I have no interest in doing.
Yeah, but this is, this is not coming on board next year or nothing.
No, no.
Okay. This is...
You've got a few years to dwell on it.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll be practicing this July.
I mean, yeah, it is valuable, valuable software to have because you can put notes, you know, good and bad things that help you in the performance reviews. I'm glad you're doing it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. County administrators report.
Yes, ma'am. I want to apologize. There's not a cover sheet for the CAC 6 of the electronic communications policy.
The cover sheet's part of the document.
Oh, it's written into the top section. Yeah. But basically, this is for information.
Is your mic on?
Pardon?
Is your mic on?
It is, but I think my battery is pooping out. Let's try this one.
All three.
There. So, so like all HR regulations, these are policies issued by the county administrator, but I want to make sure that you all are informed of it before I do, in case you have any issues. This is, this is much like, much like other HR policies, this is a living document. So you can see the changes from the existing policy that are in there and how we're updating that. There will be more coming. This area changes with some frequency. But what I'm looking for is consent, that the board consents to my issuance of this. And with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
My question, what was the catalyst for the changes?
We haven't issued a regulation ever. There's a policy document. I've been, since I've gotten here, I've been trying to take our guidance documents and turn them into a standard formatted regulation where we keep them with all the other regulations so that all the employees know where to find them. They're commonly posted on the website. The supervisors know where to find them and the public knows where to find them so that they know what our policies are. So this one has not ever been published and so we are now creating this new chapter in the HR regulation.
Ms. Warner, do you have something to say or?
The social media policy was at the request of a department head who had been having some issues with things that employees were posting on social media. The telework policy was the result of the COVID impact because we had very few employees teleworking until COVID and we needed policy to, to cover those situations.
Were they posting on their own, like on their own page?
They were posting things representing the county, wearing county uniforms and other things that employers normally don't allow.
Okay.
Well, that's a tough subject because if someone's on Facebook or something and they have their employer on there saying, I employed it by Amherst County, and they start posting things, it may be their personal opinion, but they have the name of the, of their employer right there. How do you divide that or?
When they post pictures that are considered HIPAA-protected information, you know, those types of issues, we need a way to address that.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I had the same question. What was catalyst for it? But I do have one question. 19.2.12. It, I'm not sure if you mean what you're saying here, but I'm just asking. Members of boards, commissions, councils, and committees, or other volunteer organizations directly affiliated with Amherst County government will be assigned a county email address. Is that your intent to assign everybody a county email address?
Yes. If you're a member of the Planning Commission, the Ag Committee, the Library Board, the Parks and Rec Board.
But you're not talking about volunteer fire departments in Amherst?
No.
Okay.
No, that's why it's, they're not members of boards, commissions, committees, or councils.
All right, it just...
Volunteer organization would be?
Right.
Yeah, I think that needs to be clarified because I thought the same thing. I, I thought that's what we...
Okay.
Were doing.
We'll take that for action. That's a good point.
I'm not sure you want to do that.
No, we don't want to do that. And so we'll clarify that they are not included.
Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, volunteer organizations is a bit broad.
So the EDA, for instance, will have county issued email addresses?
They already do, Miss Ma'am.
That makes sense.
And to be honest, all of, all of the members of these bodies are all appointed by the board. So maybe we just need, or other appointees.
You can fix that however you think, but I just wanted to point that out.
That, that's a great catch. Thank you.
Any other feedback, questions, concerns?
So I'd like a motion that you all consent to the issuance of this document.
Make a motion we consent.
With the edit?
With.
With that edit. Yes, sir, at 19.2.12.
So, motion on the floor by Mr. Martin? Say yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and members of the board. The next item is just the, the current status of various projects. You have that for your information. There are actual dates there now of when we're moving forward on many of these projects. I will no longer be reporting on the Boxwood Farm Convenience Center. That's up and running. And the rest, you can see the dates of when you can expect action to take place next. With regard to Central Virginia Training Center, we are just waiting for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to declare any or all of that property excess. Their goal was to have that done by January of this year, but that has not yet happened. So I don't have any other further information.
Board, any questions on the projects?
It's, it's not a question related specifically to that, but I was wondering if you, I know that you're in contact with Mr. McCormick from time to time. The Amherst Millen, is that online, is that going to be coming online here pretty soon?
Yes, sir. He wants a grand opening this summer. He mentioned June.
Okay.
So like we had one for the Westy, they'll, they'll plan a similar event for Camp Trapezeum, the brewery.
I hear he's already conducting interviews or, or his people are conducting interviews and making hires.
They are. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
County attorney?
No.
And liaison and committee reports are there for information purposes. Department reports are the same thing. Any questions on any of those? Okay, we'll open the floor back up for citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board? Seeing and hearing none, we will close that matters from the members of the board. Mrs. Tucker.
I do have two things. First is, and I have copied the board members and our county attorney and Mr. Rogers on questions that I have gotten from citizens regarding the school board, school administration's restriction on baseball spectators due to COVID-19. There was a second executive order that came out that changed that and increased the numbers. And it was my reading, it was our county attorney's reading, that this would have placed it at 1,000 spectators because our bleachers are mobile and not set. The school administration does not agree with that. They have allowed a few more spectators to participate, but not the amount that would be allowed by the governor's executive order. And board members, I don't, I don't know what else to do. I, I don't know what else to do. So I will continue to, to ask them, you know, what the plans are, but it is what it is. Question number, I mean, issue number two, the 25 questions that we've got here, I think they're extremely good and appreciate the board. Mr. Rogers, appreciate your input there. My, my concern is, are 25 too many? And do we need to pick, to reduce the amount or do we all leave it at 25? I don't, I don't have. All 25 are quite good.
I, I would like to know whether, I intend to share those questions unless you direct otherwise, with Dr. Arnold so that he can share them. Should they be, be made public, part of the public record, part of the agenda so that the public knows what questions the school leaders have been asked to answer? Or do you simply want to deliver those orally?
No, I, it's my opinion that the public should know in advance. So if they have an interest, they can participate and listen. I know that I, and I, maybe my district is just, they, they ask a lot of questions. And so quite frankly, I'm tired of people asking me questions, why? And I don't have an answer. And I want to be able to give an answer. I don't have to like the answer, but I need to be able to share information.
I would just say that I've also received calls on both these matters, specifically the number of people that can attend ballgames. They had restricted it to three people at one time. I think they've lifted that up to eight, which is better. I will commend them for that. I think, like Ms. Tucker said, more should be allowed. I don't know what we can do about that. I've also been contacted by a large number of people regarding the equity lessons that have went on in our school system. So I would say that, I would just like to reiterate that I've received plenty of complaints on both those subjects.
But your question is, should we make them public before the meeting?
Yes, ma'am. I like that guidance.
My position is yes.
I think so, too.
Three, okay.
I feel a lot of the public has been isolated and not aware of it. So any education we can give the public, they need to know about it.
And I guess even their answers, if they have time to prepare their answers before, that would be part of the agenda pack. It would be public, correct?
I'll invite that. I'll invite that.
I mean, I, I think I've got a different perspective on it as a parent with young kids. None of you really have kids in the public schools. Are yours in the, here?
No.
So, yeah, I've, I'd love to hear the answers to these because it kind of felt like, you almost felt like your kids were going to be ostracized if you didn't let them go in it. You know what I mean? If they did, if you took them out of the equity lessons, you felt like they, you almost felt like they were going to be labeled or, you know. So I have a big issue with the way they went forward and I'd love to hear their, the answers to it. Ms. Tucker, my question on the ballgames, did they give you any reason why they disagreed with the governor's gun?
No.
So they're just picking and choosing?
I don't want to put words in their mouth. You know, our, our county attorney weighed in and agreed with, with, with the way I read it.
Yeah, I saw that part.
And no, I have not heard anything from them since.
Who owns the school property else?
School board owns the school property.
And I have a great deal of respect for, for Mr. Wells. I do. I, I don't understand why we can't get an answer.